...meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee to order at 6:01 PM. Welcome everyone. We are going to wait for one of our members will be participating remotely.
Is that how we rule?
Elise, well tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
Hi, Elise, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic.
So, thank you for participating remotely. And if at any time you need clarification or you can't hear us, you know, let us know.
And I'm sure you all are thankful that I'm not spreading my germs to you.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we just called the meeting to order at this time. Are there any citizens comments? Okay, seeing none. The next item is school committee chair updates. I have no updates, so we'll go right to the student representative report. Isabel?
Awesome. Okay, so I'll start off with athletics. The boys and girls indoor track teams and swim teams will be competing in their league meets this weekend. Indoor track compete on Saturday at Fitchburg High School and swim will compete Sunday at Holy Cross. The Nordic ski team is doing well as well. They had a race yesterday at De Weston Ski Track. The Alpine team is off to a great start with the boys in first place and the girls in second place in their league, which is great for this year. The girls hockey team is eight and four and on their way to clinch a postseason spot. They haven't gotten a postseason spot for three years, so... And that's a conglomerate from a few different towns, our ice hockey program, so that's pretty exciting. And the boys hockey team is improving as the season goes on, but still working towards making the playoffs. The boys basketball team is now five and seven and getting better each game. And the girls team is now eight and five and hoping for a win over St. Bernard's tonight to clinch a playoff spot. Everyone's getting long famously with a new coach as well.
Wonderful.
The wrestling team is competing against Marlboro tonight for the league title. And the middle school basketball seasons are also going well with teams getting excited for the annual play day, which is hosted at Neshoba on Friday, February 16th, for all three towns to play against each other.
Nice.
From the music department, there's a lot of information. I have some handouts as well. So, a few Saturdays ago, four music students, senior Mark Decoto and Kat Smith, junior Arenta Morissette, and freshman Vivian Stringfellow performed at the Central Mass District Honor Ensemble at the Camps Hall in Worcester. The concert was amazing. I had the chance to be there. And they were there along with 600 other students from Worcester County, so it's a huge event. And senior Mark Decoto auditioned for the All-State Concert Band and Concert Festival, so the results are he's awaiting that, but that's very exciting as well. The department itself is just about finished with the winter concert season. Center School presents their Grade Four concert on Tuesday, February 6th at 7:00. And their concert will feature the entire fourth grade singing in the choir, as well as the 50 members of the fourth grade band. On Friday, February 8th at 7:00 PM, Center presents their Grade Five concert. Like the fourth grade concert, it features the entire fifth grade singing, but they also have 60 members in their concert band. This concert season will wrap up the Neshoba Symphony Band presenting their concert Summer Dreams on Sunday, February 11th at 3:00 PM in the NRHS auditorium. And the snow day is Thursday, February 15th, so I have these postcards for you.
Thank you.
And this upcoming Saturday, 14 students from Luther-Burbank, six students from Florence-Sawyer, and 10 students from Hale will be auditioning for Central District's Junior Festivals. This is a wonderful opportunity for highest performing music students to showcase their skills by auditioning for honors ensembles. I went to that concert last year, it was great. Those are always a lot of fun and super crazy talented middle schoolers. And two students from Florence-Sawyer were chosen to be a part of the Massachusetts Music Educators Association Treble Choir. And this is quite the achievement for these students, as they will spend the day rehearsing in Boston with over 200 other young talented singers. They will then get the chance to perform at the Mass Music Educators Annual Conference held in the Seaport Hotel in Boston. And lastly, the 2018 class plays will be on Friday, February 9th at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Each play was hand-selected, organized, and directed by students, and feature students from each grade who may be stepping on stage for the very first time. So each grade performs a play and they compete against each other. It's pretty exciting. And the plays run about 30 minutes with awards given at the end. It's super fun and tickets are $5 out the door.
Great.
Thank you, and thank you for also including information about the elementary and middle schools and what's going on there. We know there's a lot of talent in this district. It's wonderful to have the specifics about how everybody's doing, so thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Did you want to pass those cards around too? What were you thinking about? Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are going to have a presentation from the Center School. Ross, I'll let you introduce everybody and tell us what we're going to see.
So, my chair. Yeah, you can go over it. So, I'd like to introduce Lindsay Quist, one of our fifth grade teachers, as well as Grayson Edwards, and Troy Gregg, Tom Trippi, and Maddie Tabeweski. So, quite often I know that when student presentations happen to school committee, they're extracurricular-based, or they're within the specials areas. Given that we have been going through our first year of a literacy initiative with professional development for teachers, Lindsay's a little bit ahead of the curve. She came to us with some experience with readers and writers workshop, so she's actually on our literacy leadership committee that works together just about once a month. And we thought it would be nice to have some of her students present what readers workshop is and what it looks like to them, instead of just me and Principal Bates and Principal O'Shea telling you about it and explaining what the initiative and the funding sources and things like that. So, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Quist and her students. Thank you.
All right. I'm losing my voice because we spent the day at the Boston Museum of Science, so we're a little bit tired, but we're here. I'm Lindsay Quist. I teach fifth grade reading and writing at Center School. It's, I think, my 13th or 14th year teaching, my third year in the district. So, thank you guys for allowing us to come here to kind of speak to you about what we do every day. So, let me see if I do this correctly. Okay, so readers workshop, I feel like has been around for such a long time, and we just want to kind of share with you what we do every day in our class. And so, it's comprised of individualized instruction, small group instruction, and whole group instruction. So, we take that out of an hour block and we kind of just differentiate it to each student's needs. What we do is we do... The kids are going to talk to you about the different components of the workshop, but we take the common core standards and we teach it to the whole group so that everyone gets it, but then we also target which each student needs. So while we're teaching poetry, we can still focus on reading fluency, for example. So, we start right off the bat in September when the kids come in, and then we roll it out, and so by the end of October, it's running itself, which is great because it allows me to focus on the lessons and the students, and the students to kind of just focus on reading. So, I have four tired fifth graders here to talk to you guys about what we do each day in readers workshop. So... Oh, wait, did I skip one? Did I go? Okay, mini lesson. We start every reading class on the rug. This is where Mrs. Quist has the mini lesson. The mini lesson introduces the topic that we are working on and the activity for the day. Usually during the mini lesson, there's a real out followed up by an activity. The activity may be partner work, an individual project, getting notes, or practicing a skill. The topic usually goes over multiple days, but the mini lesson lasts about 15 minutes. Some of the topics we have learned about this year include figurative language, plot diagrams, predictions and instances, and character terms.
Independent reading. Read for 20 to 30 minutes a day. Independent reading happens after a mini lesson. We can read any book that we choose as long as it is a just write book. Just write books are books kids choose based on what they want to read, what interests them, and what helps them become a better reader. We can read anywhere in the room as long as our eyes are on the text. During independent reading, we have to be either reading, conferencing with Miss Quist, or working on our readers' response.
During independent reading time, students get the chance to conferencing with Mrs. Quist. This is done with just one student and Mrs. Quist in the classroom. During this time, the student talks about the book they are reading and what is happening in it. The student then reads briefly from the book to Mrs. Quist. After that, Mrs. Quist gives the student feedback about his or her reading. Together, they decide on what the next reading goal should be. The conferences last about five to seven minutes per student. During a reading conference with Mrs. Quist, she gives us a reading goal to work on. The reading goals that are assigned are different from each student because they are based on what each student needs to work on. Some goals help students to focus on their fluency, which helps them to understand their book better. Others can be to practice things that we have already learned. This gives us time to master these skills. Reading goals also help to challenge students who need to be pushed into harder ideas and concepts. By giving students a goal to work towards, it allows students to interact with their book by tracking figurative language, writing predictions on Post-Its, and making predictions within the text, and much more. Students track what their reading goal is and how they will accomplish it in their interactive reading journal.
Every two cycles, the class gets assigned a new readers' response. The RR, readers' response, is how we use the skill that is taught in the mini lesson and apply it to the book we are reading during independent reading. In small groups, we meet with Mrs. Quist, where we get the RR prompt, the lyric, an example, a due date, and questions answered. Doing the RRs helps us think deeper about the book we are reading, instead of just what is happening in the book.
Because there's so many components to readers workshop, we need a place to keep all of our work and things organized. Each student has a free rent binder that is divided into four sections: book and genre tracker, mini lessons, readers' response, and goal setting sheet. The mini lesson section is where we put the notes and handouts from class. The readers' response section is where we put the materials for the RRs and the graded ones that we get back. And the goal setting sheet section is where we write down our goals and what we will do to reach our goals. This helps to keep us organized while preparing us for middle school.
So, as Ross was mentioning, the district has really been focusing on literacy-based professional development. So, I've been working on taking the Lucy Cockens guidelines to kind of help shape my lessons and, you know, push us through each unit. But we've also been using the BAS, which we've spent a lot of time learning about the new assessment, and using it with the DRAs, which we've used in the past, to really make sure that the kids are in good fit books for them. It's also, and speaking outside of just myself, but the team I'm on too, we're using the data, not just to kind of get the data and put it in their file, but we're using it to guide our instruction now, so we're able to target the reading goals to what each kid needs, the lessons that we maybe need to revisit, or things that we can push students onto. So it's making more purposeful instruction on my end, which then makes them better and stronger and more purposeful readers, so...
Thank you so much for letting us come to the school committee meeting to share what we are doing in readers workshop. Does anyone have any questions?
This is when they're all nervous now, because we can't predict this.
How long did it take you all to come up with such a wonderful presentation?
Well, how long did we... Well, we had to reschedule, so we were ready for the snow day. So probably three or four weeks.
Wow, you did a great job.
But they do it every day, so it's like...
Was this part of the overall literacy program?
Actually, I was just going to go after that, and Ross, maybe you can chime in as a little bit. Why don't you start and then I'll fill in?
Sure. So, I think some teachers are starting to place where Mrs. Quist is at, with the experience that her professional development they've even had on their own, or from other districts, or whatever it may be. The purpose of the professional development now is to get everyone on the same page. I don't know if Lindsay can speak to it as well, but I know, you know, I've certainly heard from other teachers in the building that now that they're getting used to the readers and writers workshop model, they can see the kids, and they know the kids who've already had it, and it sort of, it helps them become more independent sooner in the year to be able to access the texts that are written and working those sort of individual reading goals within the structure of the lessons that are, the focus committee lessons that come from the standards, and we're using Lucy Cockens curriculum as a backdrop to that.
And if I can just, to the school committee, if you remember, call, this is one of our district improvement plan goals. You remember this as a piece of it, and to you, of course, we've never communicated about this, and you said everything I ever would have wanted to have heard. Just the whole thing. I mean, because this was a big decision for us last year, you know, to push forward with this, and everything you said, and Principal McCarron you as well. I mean, we're trying really hard to bring that sense of consistency and continuity across the district. So if you're experiencing this in stow, then other kids in Lancaster experience the same kind of thing. But I think too, the PD that you're receiving, I think, is incredibly rich.
Yeah.
I think that that's, you know, a huge part of the work that they're doing. Students, you are amazing. Oh my goodness, you did just a fabulous... I was so proud of you tonight. You just did superbly. Thank you so much. So, very impressive.
I'm curious about the just write reading. Do you guys have a favorite?
All your books, Winnie Pinder, many books. Troy, what's yours?
Harry Potter.
He's flying through the series too. I'm in a panic about what to do when he's done. What?
On a broomstick.
Yes, on a broomstick, figuratively speaking, right? Yeah.
What about?
Nine is mainly like graphic novels, but I'm trying to read like harder books, so like right now, I'm reading like bigger chapter books.
I am reading nightmares.
I think one thing that this model does so well is it makes all the students aware of the books that are in the classroom, because it can be overwhelming with the library. So when they hear one person talking about it, it makes them... It's a chain reaction, so...
And our principals, our school committee members too, our principals sit in on all of these PD meetings as well as our teachers. So, I mean, when you come into our buildings that day, you can't get near the parking lot because it's packed in here, but it's so exciting to watch. And this, to see this, outstanding. This just makes it all worthwhile. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you, parents, for being part of our audience. Okay. You want to do the superintendent?
I would, that'd be great. Thank you so... I am just going to hand out, I'm not going to speak very much to this, but this is just a quick handout for you. Asabat Valley Collaborative is just their annual yearly report, so that you've got a copy of that in the audit. As I said to our vice chairman, you know, to be honest with you, most of my last two weeks have been in budget meetings in some form or another, you know. You don't really have a chance to get out to the schools a lot during this time period. You're doing a lot of anything other than focusing on budget. Just a couple of quick things I want to mention. I did meet with Minuteman, the superintendent of Minuteman, and that was very, very fruitful that time. It's just a great opportunity when he and I get together to discuss, share interests. We talked a little bit about different things, issues we might have with budget. Of course, I got updated on the new building and that kind of thing, so I met with him last week, and that's always time very well spent. Town administrators continue to work regularly with our town administrators. The last two weeks, we didn't really have formal meetings, but we all met informally on some level or another. So, that continues to be ongoing, and I always appreciate that, and I always appreciate some of the sage advice that I get from those meetings. Contract negotiations, just to mention that Unit C has started. Special thanks to all of those union members that are back on the, that are around the table again, all of our school committee friends that are back at the table again for our next go-round of negotiations. I think sometimes people think that those are just so easy, and I don't realize the amount of time and effort that go into negotiations, and, you know, and I thought it was a great tone again the other night. I'm always so respectful of our contract negotiations with the people that are around the table. So special thanks to both school committee and union members and union leadership. Thank you very much for that. And the last note I just put here is about the budget progress, just because we continue. And so I just want to make one or two quick comments. You'll remember that I even said that Saturday when we had the workshop, that it's a snapshot in time. I'm going to say that again. It is a snapshot in time. And that was where we sat at that point in time. Already, there are changes. For example, we've had an additional retirement. We've had, like, those kinds of things happen. And, you know, I think I want to put out there again that we are following the same type of process that we followed last year, which is, we wanted to put everything on the table so that the school committee particularly could see what the asks were. Now, whether people get all of those asks or not is another question, but you wanted to see it before we started to pare it down, and so that's what you got that night, was here it, here's what it all is. So, we continue to work away at that. We continue to have meetings. I know Pat has been to a couple of different meetings. I know Kathy, you were at a meeting the other night with our local stakeholders. So that is ongoing as well. But again, I want to do a shout-out again. I know I said this on that Saturday, and I want to say it again. I appreciated Ann Needle not putting that number as a, you know, the 7.38 as the headline, because that isn't the headline. The headline will be when we all, when we are all finished and we say, "Okay, now this is what it is at that point in time," then that's really the time to kind of report out. So, I just wanted to kind of update you on that. So that's it for me. Like I say, most of my time right now is around budget. Any questions at all? No?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite Pat Maroni to the table, and she'll go over the FY '18 budget review and an update for FY '19.
So, most of you have this in front of you already while Elise is bringing it up. This is on the Minnesota operation for December, and this does not include the transfers that I have brought forth tonight. That's a separate document, and I would like you to take a look at that too, after you decide whether or not you have any questions on this particular document.
Is there anything you want to highlight for us, Pat, or...
Well, I've done some projections on insurance and several other areas, and it appears at this point that we may have some surplus in our insurance area. In administration, we have a couple of accounts that are going over, and one of them in particular is one of our assessments that, by the state charter school. So, that's why I have that number there. Not that that's exclusively how much the charter school went up, but that's in that general grouping of accounts, that's how much went up. I don't think there's been much change since the last month, so if we, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Neil?
I'm seeing a couple things here, just to ensure there's just simple explanations, but the 53 overage on, 53,000 overage on substitute teachers at this point in time, is that what I'm looking at? Is that...
Surplus.
Am I reading that correctly?
Surplus.
It's a surplus, okay. We're going around. So, the 50, what is the $53,000 differential for the high school?
Well, if you, the 53,000 for surplus, that's based on a projection of how our substitutes are running right now. And I have a number that I use based on, you know, the existing rate. So, that's what it looks like now. I mean, I don't know what's going to happen with the flu. That could be blown right out of the water, I don't know. But anyway, the high school, you have to remember that this report does not reflect the transfers. January's report, you'll see the transfers for the Unit A staff, because all of that contract's been settled, and I was able to go in and make transfers, so I can better track the salary lines as it was truly budgeted, so...
So that would apply to administration also?
Yes.
Everything, yeah.
Everything, right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Pat?
Sure. Can you comment on the current projected surplus for special education?
That would be tuitions, out-of-district tuitions. At this point, we're projecting 250,000. We have some others that may come to light, but at this point right now, that's what we're projecting.
Keep in mind, it only takes one...
One child.
Yeah.
You've mentioned school choice or charter schools. Where would that fall under?
Under administration.
Under administration, good.
Other questions for Pat? Okay. Do you want to talk about the budget transfers?
The transfers, like I said, I've done all of the transfers relating to Unit A and administration salary lines, and this is where we fall right now after the custodial of Unit C, actually.
Will be coming back.
When that's all settled, then we'll have, I'll have another transfer. At that point, whenever that's settled, I'll have a better idea where we're going to land till the end of the year, and hopefully I don't have a third.
Any questions for Pat on the transfers?
I have a question.
Sure.
Looking at the line item health insurance active...
Yes.
There's a negative balance even after the transfer. Can you explain, can you talk about that? The 155, unless I'm reading it wrong. So, last line, health insurance slash active.
Right, that's where the increase money was posted. I had to budget for the increase.
I see.
And that's where it came from.
Okay. Yeah, all right, thank you. Any other questions for Pat?
I do need a vote on the transfers.
Okay. We have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the proposed budget transfer request for fiscal year '18.
Second? Somebody? Steve?
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were second.
All in favor? Oh, no, he made the motion. I can't. Never mind. I'll call on you next time, okay?
Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes, there is a second.
Steve, just a second. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Elise?
Yep.
Oh, you can vote, I'm sorry. Are you a yea or a nay?
I'm a yea, yes.
It's a yea, yea.
Yay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. I think we may need to roll call when we have a distant person.
Actually, we are supposed to...
Remote person.
Okay, let's do it.
So, Mark Jones votes yes?
Excuse me, Mark. I believe that I am the chair this evening?
Good.
Okay, so I'm going to call the board. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Elise?
Yep.
Lynn?
Yep.
Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, moving right along. Budget update.
Budget update. As superintendent has explained to you that we are still working on some changes. Retirement has come to light. We have a committee meeting to look at insurance rates and possibly some changes to that. And I should have some numbers probably in the next month or so. Hopefully, we'll have good, solid rates anyway to finish the budget.
Okay. Anything else about the budget?
I don't think so. Again, I would just say we're consistently having ongoing meetings, whether it's about staffing, whether it's about questioning direction, questioning philosophically. I mean, we're having a lot of discussion, but we're looking for...
Looking for efficiencies.
Always looking for efficiencies, yeah.
So, you asked for input from us, some questions, so we can go with those later? Are you going to delay a date?
I think, yeah, I think that Lorraine has your questions, because she brought them to me, and we went through, and I actually have some answers that I actually just shipped them back after her today.
Okay, that's fine.
And I think, looking at agendas moving forward, they've been parsed out over the next several meetings, so that we can focus on them. Neil, anything?
No, I mean, you're going to be rolling something out, like some sort of revision to us to take a look at.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Probably more than one, to be honest with you.
Sure.
Elise, any questions on the budget?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next item of new business is a review of the building rental rates.
This morning, the budget warrant committee met, and I went over these rates with them. You have two documents that were posted. One has the current facility rental rates, and the other document is the proposed facility's[1746.84] One has the current facility rental rates and the other document is the proposed facilities' rental rates. The committee looked at them and I, I don't know if you want to respond to that.
Neil, as the chair of the budget warrant?
All right, so we, um, we voted to recommend to the, the school committee that, um, that you all accept the, and it was unanimous, the proposed facility rental rates. The issue, just a little back history, um, this actually began almost three years ago in looking at the, the rental rates and determining that we were, well, you can see there, renting, uh, there were parts of the school that were being rented for like $25 a night. And you, the cost for the custodian in February to heat the place, the, the district is losing a ton of money. Um, so these rates hadn't been revised for ever, as far as what we could find, right? So, um, so we asked you guys to take a look and, and this has been ongoing, where you guys have been meeting on this and kind of going over numbers since last year.
A committee happened, yeah.
Yeah, since last year.
Last year we started this process.
And so this is what's been brought forward and the, the thought that we had asked you to do is something that was thoughtful, still, um, still affordable for, um, for organizations, but more realistic and in line with capturing the true expenses that we have to incur. Even with this all in, it's probably not, um, something that's net neutral at this point in time, but it's pretty close to it, based on what you guys were able to, to come up with.
So maybe, Pat, just to highlight some of the salient points.
Right. Um, basically, we looked at the, um, breaking of the turf field separate. That's something that isn't on the first, it says athletic field, but, um, we brought, we broke it out into two different categories, saying that the turf field is a little bit more expensive to maintain than a regular, um, you know, regular turf field. So, um, that was one highlight. One other thing, too, um, in this whole process, we looked at all of the surrounding communities and we looked at their rates. And in some cases, their rental rates were significantly higher. But in trying to keep this affordable for the people that, in the community that want to use it, use our buildings, we decided that this was probably the best way to go and that's why we brought this forward to the committee.
And we're looking at starting this?
Um, July.
If it's, if it's started, July 1st.
July 1st.
The new fiscal year, July 1st.
Okay.
So part of what we, can I jump there for a second?
I was just going to call in.
Part of what we had talked about, well, a couple of things. So Group A, who's listed there where it says no charge, uh, to define that, that's actually school and municipal-based organizations that would be involved. Then there's the nonprofit groups and then we have for-profit group, camps, um, and then we have, um, like longer-term leases that organizations may have for like an annual lease for like, say, the turf field or something like that. This is supposed to be fairly self-explanatory, which it wasn't before, and will be posted online, so anyone who's interested in renting will be able to access this, get the pertinent information and be able to, to get in contact with the right people. And then we were talking with the administration, they're going to do their best to notify the current people that are involved in this, just to give them plenty of time to notify that there are maybe some changes.
Yeah, some of our, our regular folks are already, they are already aware of the fact that there's something in the works, so this should, there shouldn't be a surprise to anyone, quite frankly.
Uh, Lynn?
I just have a question about school, community and municipal. A group like Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, are they considered community municipal or nonprofit?
So we'll turn that over.
Community. Okay, because I just wanted to admit, just because the kids are big community.
Yeah.
That's the definition of that.
We, we really need to make sure that that particular area is more streamlined and very clearly outlined, because that has been an area of some difficulty for us. And I think some area of, um, not clear, clear parameters with what this is defined as, and we've run into problems with that, certainly in the time that I've been here. So that's one of the reasons we're saying, you know, we need to really focus on that.
So is there a...
To be consistent.
So is that the only definition of a group A?
We, we could go back and do some clearer definitions, if you think that would be appropriate. We're fine to do that.
Yeah, I think I'm in the mission with that.
Yeah.
I think this morning, there was some, you know, um, concern. I mean, there's school, community, and then there's school slash community slash municipality. So we had some conversations about what community meant and we wanted to focus on organizations within the towns and also the schools.
Schools, yeah.
So clarity around that, I could, I think.
It's based on the rental, uh, the agreements that we have with the towns.
Right.
On, on rental, that's how this is coming forward. It's not something that we've just arbitrarily come, came up with. So the agreement is for, I believe it's municipal, to be more specific, municipal organizations that are tied in with, uh, the, uh, the particular towns.
Like the rep departments.
Right.
Rep departments, um, yeah.
Other questions, comments? Elise?
Now, um, that addressed my question, sort of what exactly fell into that category.
All right. I also want to point out that this was something that came up in the forensic audit and the concern in not, um, funding it adequately is that Chapter 70 funds, you can make the argument that they were being used for this type of thing, which is not okay. So this puts us back on track and, um, thank you for the work that you did on this and I think it's going to make a, a good difference, so.
And we need to vote on it?
Yes, we do. So, um, if someone would make a motion to accept the, um, the proposed facilities rental rates with the effective date of July 1st, 2018?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Roll call vote, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Lynn?
Kathy? Yes.
And thank you for your work on this.
And one more thing for Pat?
One more thing for me. Um, I have a letter here for, um, the school committee to accept a donation of $1,200. And this would be for the Journalism Newspaper Club. This would send student journalists, approximately 35, to, um, the showing of the movie The Post starring Tom Hanks and Meryl Streep. Um, this is an important film. It highlights many aspects of journalism and news. The field trip is being sponsored by a generous nonprofit organization, CenterPoint.org, and the gift includes tickets, transportation and refreshments. And it's being planned from mid-February under the direction of Jackie Carter and Melissa Foley Journalism and Broadcast Teachers at Neshoba.
Can we have a motion?
I move that the school committee accept the donation as proposed.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Roll call, Mark?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Lynn?
Kathy, yes.
So that passes and, and thank you so much to CenterPoint.org.
What a great idea.
Oh, my God, I'm just excited.
And the movie looks good.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? What is CenterPoint.org? I just tried to Google them and they're not, their website, um, says it's under construction and coming soon, so I was just wondering.
I don't know, to be honest with you, I'm not sure.
And I know this is, I know this is kind of crazy and this is a little bit out there with, um, but I really think it's important that we vet the organizations that are actually giving us donations, because heaven forbid that we, that we should approve the funding of some...
Yeah.
...organization that would be, oh, let's say, less than flattering, um, that we took a donation from, if you know what I'm saying?
Right point, yeah, okay.
And, and that, so I, I would make a recommendation that we just, if we have time, I don't know if we do, but just reconsider the vote, um, until we understand CenterPoint or any organization.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lynn.
Well, I'm wondering, I know that they're anonymous, but somebody must know the answer. I mean, does the teacher or you?
The teacher and Paul DeDomenico.
Could we ask Paul to get us information?
And I don't mean to be a stickler about that, but you see some of this stuff happen every once in a while that always, you know, like, oh, and next thing, we're all over the news.
We'll do a check with Paul. I, I would assume, honestly, I would assume that he would have done a vet.
I'm sure it's totally on the up and up and legit, everything, I'm just bringing that forward and there's no information, double check on that.
But moving forward, if we could ask, um, the people that come forward with this, if there is an organization such as that to provide just a handout or something with that information, as...
That's terrific. Well, yeah, we'll let our friends know.
Yeah.
That might sound wacky.
Nope.
No, I don't think it is at all. I think it's, I think it's very sage.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Pat. Okay, so we have...
Stay here, yeah. Actually, just stay there, yeah.
We have a, um, a presentation. I'm going to let Pat tee it up and introduce our guest.
I have with us today, um, from PRIM, which stands for Pension, Reserves, Investment Management, um, Mr. Paul Tedesco, and he's going to give us an overview of his, the company that he works for and their plans for OPEB investment.
Great. Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Paul, welcome.
Thank you.
I have a, a quick, um, question for you here, if you can help us out. I know that we may have one or two members of the audience, or certainly of the viewing audience tonight, that may just need a quick refresher on what OPEB is. And so I, I think you're, you're in a perfect position to, before you even go down this road of, of what your company has to offer.
Sure.
To explain what it is and so why we would need an organization like yours. You know, I had somebody say to me the other day, oh, what, what is that actual amount? Like, again, Neil, I can never say that word.
The alphabet soup of government.
Yeah, and you say, well, it's, it's this many million and it's like, well, how does that work when it's like half of your budget? And that's like, that's not exactly how it works, but, so if you could kind of just do a little bit of an overview, I think that would be very much appreciated.
Sure, my pleasure.
Thank you.
And first, before I get started, um, I just want to clarify, we are not a company. We're not a private company. We're the state pension fund. So it's a $71.9 billion fund. It invests the assets of the state employees, the state teachers, which means the public school teachers, like Mrs. Quist, who is in here tonight, and, uh, the other teachers in the Neshoba Regional School District. And then cities and towns can also invest in our fund and enjoy the benefits of being in a pension fund that's, uh, a large fund that has economies of scale and can do what we do at a very low cost. But, um, with that, um, OPEB. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And there is a liability in this area, because for the first time ever, uh, 10 years ago, the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, are required that governmental units begin to recognize the liability for health insurance for their retirees on their financial books and their financial statements. And since these had always been kind of a footnote and had been accrued, but never really recognized as a liability, um, uh, this obviously would have an impact on, uh, an entity's ability to go out and bond, to go at, at a favorable rate. It can potentially, at the credit rate, just another debt. You have pension debt, like, you know, the Worcester Regional Retirement System, invest in the PRIC fund, but they have an unfunded pension liability. Well, very similarly, all entities, unless they've been fully funding this from day one, have a liability. And, um, the one thing about GASB, um, and there are two rules, 43 and 45, said, well, you have to disclose, you know, the liability, but there's no requirement to fund it. However, there's almost, uh, you're almost forced to have to address it and start funding it. So, uh, a number of municipalities across the state, school districts, housing authorities, all public, all political subdivisions of the state are now beginning to put money aside. Not all of them have, um, but a good many have begun. And, um, uh, they've accepted, uh, the provisions of a statute that was set up to allow for the establishment of OPEB funds. That's, uh, Section 20 of Chapter 32B of the general law. So I'm, I'm assuming, and I don't like to assume, but that the, the school committee has accepted the provisions of Section 10, 20, oh, so you haven't gone to that point yet?
We have a fund, but we've never accepted that, the new statute.
Okay, yes, all right. So now we're, we're starting at the ground floor, which is a perfect time, because what I, whatever, what's contained in this book does show you the steps on how to do that. I mean, you're probably already aware of that, but in order to invest in this fund, now, I'm here from PRIM, but I'm, I'm wearing two hats, which is hard, because I only have one head, but by day, my day job is a senior client services officer with the PRIM board. But I'm also assisting the state's OPEB fund. That's the State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund, which was set up about 10 years ago to address the Massachusetts state retirees' OPEB liabilities. As this has evolved, um, they were allowed to invest that fund in the PRIC fund, in the Pension Reserves Investment Trust Fund, which is the pool of money that the PRIM board, which are the people, manage. So, um, they are now required by law to invest in PRIM. So really, any entity that decides to go this route and have the money invested through the state retiree benefits trust fund, you're really getting invested by the, by the PRIM board, by the PRIC fund, in the PRIC fund. So that's, that's the big benefit there. And again, it's, it's a very cost-efficient, well-performing, well-diversified fund, and I have a sheet on that I can get at in a moment, but, um, in order to be GASB compliant, in other, in other words, to, to have an irrevocable, uh, OPEB trust fund, you must, uh, establish an OPEB committee. Well, first you have to accept the provisions of Section 20, Chapter 32B. But within those provisions, and I have it outlined here in the, in the narrative, but it shows you some revisions to Chapter 32B on slides four and five of this presentation. It kind of outlines the changes in the law which took place in 2016, which now require any entity that wants to establish an OPEB trust to also establish an OPEB trust committee, a subcommittee of this committee or any committee. It's, it's specifically outlined in the statute and it's, uh, contained in this document who the members of that, uh, of that committee would be. You also have to establish a declaration of trust and that makes it an irrevocable trust, a GASB 43 compliant trust, which means you can't take the money out for any other purposes except for addressing the liabilities of, of OPEB. So the school district couldn't come in and, or someone could vote to, use it to, uh, fund a repair of a, the frozen pipes in the school or whatever it might be, it has to be used for those specific purposes. So that's really the way to get it started. And, you know, there, uh, in order to invest in the state retiree benefits trust fund, uh, it is overseen by a separate board, other than the PRIM board. On, on slide seven of the presentation, these are the individuals who make up the, uh, the trustees of the State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund Board. And as you can see, Michael Heffernan, who is the Secretary of Administration of Finance, serves on the board. He has designated Frank Gervasio as his designate on the board. Treasurer Goldberg, Deborah Goldberg, is also on the board. She's designated Nick Faberito, who is, uh, the head of the State Retirement Board, uh, to be her designate. And, um, the state comptroller also serves on the board, Tom Shack, as does the executive director of the Group Insurance Commission of Massachusetts, Roberta, Dr. Roberta Irman. And she has Catherine Moore serving as her designate. The executive director of the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, Joseph Connerton, uh, that, that organization, more alphabet soup, they're called PARAC with PRIM, they're PARAC. They're the oversight authority, they're the regulatory authority over retirement boards, but they've also been, uh, they're also part of this, the OPEB liability and have some oversight on that as well. And then the treasurer and the governor each have an appointee to the board, private citizen appointees. Thank you so much. So that's the makeup of the board. Now, what their role is, is to accept submissions from governmental entities and approve those submissions to invest in the fund. Now, um, they would, they have a standard investment agreement and they also have recommended verbiage for various votes that need to be taken by the governmental entity and by the OPEB committee. It has to be submitted, letters of incumbency, all that stuff. And again, I've listed all of that in this book. It's also downloadable on the website for the SR BTF. I've also included that web address in, in the book as well, so I'm not going to go through that page by page and I know we have a limited time. But, uh, the, at the end of the day, once that process is completed, then the money is invested in PRIM and, uh, you'll receive monthly statements from us, capital account in PRIC, and you'll receive monthly statements from us, capital account statements, where you'll see, you know, your beginning balance, what, any contributions that might have been made during the period, any withdrawals, if there are withdrawals, also investment gains, management fees, and, you know, that kind of information. Typical mutual fund-type capital account statement. When I say fees, I just want to clarify, we don't charge fees. We simply pass through the costs of our operation, our monthly budget, whatever it costs, you assess that pro rata share, and it's net assets. It's not, you don't write a check to us. It's just taken from the assets, whatever that cost is. Right now, we're running the fund at about 54 basis points, so a little bit better than half a percent. And when you have a big fund like ours, almost $72 billion, and actually, that was at the end of December, it's actually a little bit bigger than that today, the way the markets have been going, you know, that's a pretty reasonable cost, given the type of sophistication we have in our portfolio, which I have also included in this book. But I will stop here right now and take any questions, if you have any, about just the whole process.
Any questions for Paul? Neil?
I'm sorry, I have a few. But thank you very much, because this is meaty, and it's informative as far as the process. Now, the first question I have is, I noticed, I was reading about you have turnkey option. Is that literally walk-in, you guide us step-by-step through the irrevocable trust, the establishment of a board, you know, et cetera? And could you define what turnkey?
Yeah, I mean, that's a term that was used to say that that's the way to invest in the fund initially, to accept those provisions of law. You have to do the work to get... Now, the thing is, we'll help you. We will help, we have different forms or examples of other trusts that have been submitted. A lot of it's boilerplate stuff, and we'd be happy to share that with you. We're also very involved in the whole process when you make a submission. We'll help guide it along the way.
The administration would take, obviously, take the lead in this process of putting this together, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So when we get to putting together a board, is that independent of the school committee itself?
Um, yes.
So it's not a subcommittee, it's an actual separate board?
It's a separate board, but it could consist of members of the school committee.
Sure, I'm just trying to understand where it goes. And then that particular board, are they, are they the ones that are responsible for choosing the particular investments that are taking place within that fund?
No, you accept one investment in the total PRIC fund.
Okay.
So there are no, there's no...
So they're not making any sort of financial decisions?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. The decision to invest in the fund would be the investment.
So essentially, what would their role be?
Their role is to oversee the OPEB fund locally and have usually the treasurer of the school committee. Do you have a treasurer, or how is that?
Yes, we have a treasurer.
We have a treasurer for the district.
For the district, but not for the school committee, yeah.
So, okay, so the treasurer for the district, this is the, is this the chief executive of the school district, the school committee? Are you the top of the tier?
Yes.
In terms of that?
They really are.
You're not the governmental unit.
Right.
You make that decision, and then, you know, a committee is, it can either be, you know, as long as the treasurer of the district is on that committee. Because by law, the treasurer is the custodian of the OPEB fund.
Of the funds, yeah.
So it'd really be, you know, the onus would be on the treasurer and the committee to oversee that fund, you know, report to you on a monthly, quarterly, or annual basis, or however. That would be totally up to you and your, the way you govern it so that...
Thank you. And the other question I had deals with, so let's say we got involved in this fund, it's, the state pension fund also runs through this too, same funds?
Yes, yes, exact same investments.
So what, and I'm sure you guys are doing well, but what happens if, because you hear this, state runs out of money for their pension funds? What happens to our OPEB money?
That is a separate, it's a trust. It belongs to you, it doesn't belong to the state. It's just invested by the state.
But if the funds, can the funds go belly up, and everything that's invested in that fund go belly up?
Theoretically, yes.
I'm just taking that worst-case scenario, do you know what I'm saying?
Theoretically, yes. But in practical, you know, practically speaking, I've been with PRIM now since, I don't even like to say it, since 1984, since 1984. I know, I don't look at it, I started when I was very young, right? But we are, we are probably, when you hear about, you know...
Orange County, California.
Orange County, when you hear about Rhode Island, and you hear about other jurisdictions, Detroit, where there have been bankruptcies, where the pensions have gone belly up. State of New Jersey is another classic example. We're probably among the most responsible pensions in the country in terms of commitment to funding and to full funding. The state is on a funding schedule right now to fully fund, I know it's by the year 2038. And the state puts in a significant amount of money each year from the, to the pension fund, from the state budget. And, you know, in terms of, say, Worcester Regional that invested in PRIC, you know, obviously, the units within Worcester Regional are assessed their costs as well. But the funding has been pretty remarkable, I think, in terms of changes that we've made to the funding schedule. We withstood the global financial crisis in 2008. It was our worst year ever, but it wasn't only our worst year ever, it was the worst year ever for quite a few folks, as we know. You know, the remarkable thing is that September of '08, when the, you know, crash really hit, that, we were in a period of, you know, uncertainty. And at the time, I would get calls from beneficiaries who don't usually call me, because I deal with cities and towns and retirement boards, and they would say, "Am I going to get my pension?" I'd say, "Yes, absolutely, you're going to get your pension. You're in a defined benefit plan. There's no way you're not going to get your pension. It's your money, and the state is obligated to do that, regardless of how the fund is performing in any given year." But, and then lo and behold, you know, starting in March '09, we've seen this uninterrupted bull market. Now, you know, it's been a long cycle. I don't think people really know what cycles are anymore. We're in an extended period of market robustness, and, you know, you can make a lot of money in a bubble, but, you know, the way we've positioned our fund is to be very defensive. So although we're a growth-oriented fund, which means we have assets like lots of stocks, you know, equities, both public stocks and private equity, because we need that growth aspect to deal with our pension unfunded liability, it's the same situation with OPEB, where, you know, you need to aggressively fund it and need to invest it in a way that's going to give you more than, say, a cash return or, you know, I know, and I know that there are other options. I know you've seen a couple of money managers in here, I know, like Bartholomew, Rockland Trusts, they do a lot of work in municipal finance, so, you know, so that's their job, what they do there, and they'll give you, you know, as much of a diversified portfolio they can for an entity of your size. With us, your money goes into a fund, and it's, and you get the same benefits that we get cost-wise and everything else.
So that is my final question I was going to ask. So how would you differentiate yourselves from, say, somebody like PARs or Bartholomew or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we have no other, we're not asset gatherers, we don't have a profit motive, we don't get paid anything extra for, this is a service. And the state, they did it with the pension funds, the state said, "Well, we'll have this big pension fund, and we'll allow cities and towns, if they want, to invest in it." There are 104 retirement systems, we manage assets of about 95 different systems in one form of another, one form or another. Right now, there are 62 local entities that are invested in this OPEB fund. But we do it because it's a service. It's something that the state says, the legislature said, "We want you to be able to help, go out there and help communities." So that's our motive, is to simply be a service.
So I know that you do some municipalities, because I'm certainly aware of that. Have you got a number of school districts already on dock as well?
Yeah, I mean, if you look on Slide 45, there's a list of the various entities that are in the fund right now.
My apologies, I should have seen that.
No, no problem. And we have, just as I go down the list, we have EdCollabs by County Educational Collaborative, we have Case Collaborative, we have the Lincoln Sudbury Regional School District, we have the Lower Pioneer Valley EdCollab, we have the Manchester Essex Regional School District, actually, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is a state entity, has asked us to invest their money on there, we have to. We have the Shawshene Valley Technical High School, Pilgrim Area Collaborative, and, you know, we continue to talk to a number of other school districts as well. Just recently, I've been talking to the folks at Old Rochester and Matapoiset. So more getting interested along these lines, as they begin to establish OPEB funds, like where you, we are at right now, and looking for a way to invest them, so.
Great, thank you. Other questions?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mark?
No, it's time for him to continue.
Anyway, let me just check. So, Mark, Steve, do you have any questions?
Yeah. The monies you have in OPEB, that's a separate fund than the rest of the pension funds that you manage?
It's a separately accounted fund, yes. It's co-mingled into the big pot, yeah.
Is that, Elise?
Um, no, that was helpful.
Okay. Neil?
So, thank you. I apologize for...
No, no, I just wanted to make sure everybody...
Sure, appreciate that. So could you talk about Page 16?
Sure.
So the total fund returns, I'm just looking at this, and I'm looking at, you know, the different bars that we have on here, and if you could explain that in particular, I'm looking at value-added and so forth.
Sure.
You know, if you can maybe go over that, so we can understand this a little bit.
Absolutely. The total fund return is the state's OPEB fund invested in the PRIC fund. So those returns will mirror the returns of the PRIC fund. But the blue column stands for the rate of return, net of all fees, for the various periods, fiscal year-to-date, one year, three year, five year, 10 year, and then since inception of the fund. The orange, I think it's orange, bar, is the policy benchmark. Now, there's an asset allocation, you know, an investment policy that we follow. There's a picture of it in the book. You know, we have 40% in global equities, we have 12% in fixed income investment grade, we have 10, 11% in private equity, we have 10% in real estate. Most of that real estate is private real estate, real estate that we own. As a matter of fact, my office is in the, is in a building that we own on State Street in Boston. So, you know, we have a very diversified portfolio of real estate holdings around the U.S. Value-added fixed income, and I know that term gets a little bit, it's being used here for another reason, but value-added fixed income really are just below-investment-grade bonds, high-yield bonds, bank loans, emerging market debt, and private debt, also known as distressed debt. We have this category called, bless you, called portfolio completion strategies. 9% of that are hedge fund strategies. The other 4% are certain asset classes that PRIM does not have exposure through the rest of its portfolio, such as real assets. We own some agricultural land, we own blueberries. And, not to say I had a great blueberry muffin this morning, I always think of it when I said, "We have investments in blueberries." So, and the tips are treasury inflation-protected securities. So when inflation finally does come back, it's only at about, I think, one and a half percent, last look, and the Fed kept the rates, Janet Yellen's last meeting today, kept the rates where they are. But in case inflation comes up, that's another real asset that will help mitigate inflation. And then timberland, which is another very interesting asset class. We actually own trees. We own acreage, acreages of timber, mostly in the northwest United States, and also in the southeast U.S., up through Pennsylvania, and also in Australia. We have an international investment in Australia. And as a matter of fact, today we had our, this is the week of our committee meetings, and we have different committee meetings for different parts of the fund. And today was real estate and timber. We got a great presentation on our timber portfolio by one of the committee members, who is a forester. He's, this is what he does, he's a PhD in forestry. And we were getting all kinds of great information from him. Now, so this asset allocation, if it were passively managed, in other words, if we were just looking at market rates of return, or the benchmarks that are used for each of those asset classes, that's what the return in the orange represents. So our 7.9%, the added value over that was at 90 basis points, and the same with the rest of the chart. So 17.3 we did for the year on a net of fees basis. The benchmark was up 14.1, which means we added 3.2% above the market, really, and what we measure ourselves against. And that's the same throughout this chart. Like I said, at the end of December, the fund was at almost one and a half billion, and a little bit more than 400 million is just, other than the state retirees' money. State retirees' money is about $1 billion.
Thank you. Sure. Do you get a little bit of relief from some of the standard, I guess, restrictions that a state agency has in terms of your operations, since in many ways you're acting like fidelity, but indeed have the kind of flexibility that they have as well?
Yeah, we're a self-funding agency, so we're not a state agency, we're a quasi-state authority, but we operate off-budget, we don't have any budget constraints along those lines. Now that said, our budget is approved by the PRIM board and has to be reviewed by the House Ways and Senate Ways and Means Committees every year. We've never had any issues with that. They know that we're, you know, one of the reasons why we're trying to close the gap on the unfunded liability is to do what we can and, you know, get the best managers in the world, because we do outsource all the management to private money managers all around the world, depending on their expertise or their areas of investment. So the only restrictions we have is when the state decides it doesn't want us to invest in tobacco stocks, so we don't do that. We also don't invest in companies or financial institutions doing business with Sudan or Iran. And then years ago, we were on the, really, the forefront of a lot of the social responsibility issues. We did not invest in South Africa for quite a while. Also Northern Ireland, any company making rubber bullets or tear gas or any kind of munitions for the government of Northern Ireland, we were restricted from investing in those companies. So those, the restrictions that are placed on us are done by the legislature. We don't unilaterally, you know, put restrictions on ourselves, because it would be a breach of our fiduciary duty. And when I say "our," that's the PRIM board, and there's pictures of them, and there's a listing of them in the book here as well.
If we decide to go with PRIM, is there like field representatives that come out and work with us, or is everything done remotely? How does that work?
It's done remotely, but y'all looking at the field representative. I will help you every inch of the way. So, you know, whoever you designate as your key person, just work with me, and we'll get, we'll get all the material. The material usually has to be in before a board meeting. They meet six times a year. They actually canceled their first board meeting, which was scheduled for tomorrow, in fact, but they will, their next meeting will be in April. So they'll meet five other times throughout the year. And I believe the board meeting dates are on their website, but I can provide you with those as well. I don't know if I already did.
Okay, so just to wrap up.
Yes, yes.
Why go with PRIM? Give us the elevator spiel.
That's right.
As opposed to, say, PARs or Bartholomew?
Well, I think it's because we do provide a service, and we're not motivated by anything other than trying to give you the best investment returns for your fund at a very, very low expense. 54 basis points is for this kind of portfolio that you just saw could not be...
And what does that mean when you say 54 basis points?
It's a half a percent of costs.
Oh, okay.
And it's your pro rata share, whatever your, whatever your share of the total is.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a very, very low cost to the district.
Thank you. Mark, and then Neil.
What is your standard that you measure against? I imagine you may have a changing policy over the years, and can you describe what your current policy is?
Yeah, the policy benchmark is what we see here. It's really a composite of the different asset classes and the benchmarks that are associated with those asset classes. For instance, with global equities, we have U.S. stocks, we have international developed, which is Europe and Japan, Australia, and we have emerging markets equity, which are the growing economies, the developing economies. So there are various market benchmarks that measure the performance of each of those areas. And, you know, since we have a diversified portfolio, we'll have, in our U.S. stocks, we'll have large-cap stocks, so they get pegged to the S&amp;P 500, to the 500 largest stocks in the U.S. stock market. Then the small cap, we have small... Then the small cap, we have small and mid-cap stocks. That's pegged to the Russell 5,000. So just as an example, international stocks are pegged to EFA, which is Europe, Australian, Far East Index. Emerging market equities, there's an emerging markets benchmark. And most of these benchmarks are done either like there's S&amp;P, there's the Russell, Frank Russell, there's MSCI, which also does many of the stock benchmarks for bonds. Barclays Aggregate Index measures investment-grade bonds. We use that. For high yield, we'll use a Merrill Lynch High-Yield Index. There are various of these indices. That make up, they make up the policy benchmark. So 40% of that policy benchmark is going to be made up of all of those equity benchmarks or indices, I should say, that I just mentioned. And that's how that works. And we, and since we strive to beat those, the market and be ahead of it through active management, through management in our alternative investments like private equity, like real estate, like timberland, and some of our hedge fund strategies, you know, it shows, if we're beating that policy, that means our asset allocation is working. That means our managers are doing the job and we're getting the job done.
Thank you.
So the only other question that I have at this point is, like, you're, since you have outside asset managers and so forth...
Yes.
I'm assuming that this is not, I mean, the 53, 54 basis points that you have, that's all in, right?
That's all in. It's all of our funds.
Okay, so that's, it's not performance-based, but that's, okay. How does that stand over like the test of time as far as those 53, 54 basis points have gone for management?
Let me see if I have that...
I didn't notice anything. If you did, that's great.
It's actually, we've been able to control our costs pretty substantially. Here's on slide 43, actually.
Thank you.
It's the PRIM Fund Ratio of Expenses and Basis Points.
Great.
And, you know, we had a high mark, which really isn't that, still not that bad, in 2006, of 63 basis points. But you can see it stayed in the 50s range over the last 11 years or so.
That's great. Thank you.
And we're, and there's another page here called Project Save. And one of the things that we keep saying is, you know, you can't predict a one basis point of return, but you can predict and control a basis point of cost. So we've been able to try and realize some cost savings to the fund through this program called Project Save, and, which we initiated several years ago. And we have different, this is on slide 32, I'm sorry to keep...
That's all right.
We've been around like this.
That's all right. We're with you.
But we've done things over the last, oh, now, almost eight years running to try and bring down the cost for that, from where we were at that 62 basis points to where we are today, and are still looking for ways to do it. And these are the ways we have done it. We invest our hedge funds in a very bespoke way these days. When we initially began investing in hedge funds, which was 14 years ago, we were doing like other big pensions were doing at the time, investing in a fund-of-funds, which means you hire a manager who oversees a bunch of other managers. And there's a cost, two layers of cost there. Well, we got rid of one layer of those costs. We got rid of the fund-of-funds program. We now just invest directly in hedge funds, and even beyond that, we invest in separate accounts with hedge funds. So even with direct hedge fund management, you're usually in co-mingled accounts, and those accounts are very expensive, and a very expensive asset class. But we're able now to manage our, get separate accounts and basically negotiate down the cost of that, of those management fees with those folks. And we're looking for other ways to save, and there's, this chart kind of explains how we've done that.
Great, thank you.
Then last word, last question?
I understand you're right. We've built an application and you guys accept us in the program. So is there anything that would really, restrictions, like you have to have a minimum of so much money going in, or...
Not so much coming in. They do have a minimum investment amount of $100,000. However, if there's less than $100,000 and you have a funding commitment going forward to put in, you know, say $50,000 a year or over the next several, you just make a justification to them and they will weigh that $100,000 minimum.
Very good, thank you. So it doesn't change the fee, fee structure at all?
No, no, not at all. Not at all. Yeah, there's no sliding scale or anything like that.
Well, thank you. This is very informative.
Thank you.
A lot of good information, and we appreciate your...
Thank you, Elise.
...and joining us, and...
It was a pleasure. I enjoyed the whole evening. It was nice, you were a great committee. I like your chemistry with each other and your students. You got some smart kids here.
We do. We have lots of smart kids.
That's for sure.
Thank you so much, Paul. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
All right. The next item on the agenda is, as we said, we'll be talking about things as they pertain to the budget. And you may recall that a few meetings back, Brooke came forward with the recommendation to keep the tuition fees for pre-K and K the same as they were for this year. What I wanted us to talk about was last year when we were raising the fees and, you know, looked into that, there were some suggestions that the fees be adjusted each year, just as our expenses increase. So we might consider increasing fees based on that. And the easiest thing for me to think about with regard to that are looking at the increase in teacher salaries. So the teacher's salaries will increase by 2%. And I thought it would be germane to discuss what we think about applying some, and I have no idea how much, 2%, whatever. But we saw with those fees that had remained stagnant for so many years, we saw this, say the same thing with athletic fees, which haven't changed, and user fees, which haven't changed in almost 20 years, the rentals, the same thing. So...
I'm happy to speak to, too.
Sure.
Thank you. So you're absolutely right. I mean, so I just want to also go back and do a revisit, and, you know, again, I want to reference the forensic audit, you know, and the fact that we went through that entire process, which to me was just such a healthy process to go through, and I think it led us to some, some great things in terms of realigning some things that we needed to realign within the district. And you're absolutely right. We didn't, for years, raise any of these fees. And so, and you recall that last year, when this whole thing came up about raising the fees, we said, oh my goodness, you know what? We can't get there all at once. And we all knew that. So to Kathy's point, I mean, the point is well-taken, because at what point in time do you start to say, listen, incrementally, we might really want to think about this? Because the truth is, it's not always just a 2%. I mean, that's, that's the level of increase of this particular contract. But I mean, if you understand how that matrix works, it's absolutely not a 2%.
Right, right.
And so the point is that at some point in time, I appreciate and am very respectful of having some discussion on it. And again, I still stand here tonight and say I'm really not wanting to make any increases right at this point in time. But I do think it's healthy for us to have some discussion on it, because you're absolutely right. Like, what do we, what do we think moving forward with this? Is this something we look at incrementally? You know, we took, I think unfairly so, I think the school committee, and certainly, you know, I won't, I guess I can speak for myself, but at times I think we've taken a lot of heat, unfairly so, because it's just a case of trying to readjust things that, as you say, haven't been increased for a fair number of years. And so we're just trying to find that alignment now, and we're, we look so differently at the budget now. You know, as Pat and I were talking this morning with our, you know, our finance subcommittee or Budget and War Committee, you know, and talking about the whole pre-K and K component, and how do you tease that out? Because it's really, when you take a look, especially at that pre-K, it's really a special education model. And how do you tease that out? You know, we've, we've spent hours and hours and hours working on this, and you understand why a lot of districts have not taken that challenge on. But at the end of the day, you also see that, in essence, the school district supports the running of those programs, right? So that's a way of saying, I don't know that we can ever be self-sustaining because the costs are too great. So I put that on the table to just say, that's where we see things right now. I do support, maybe not this year, but next year, starting to take a look and say, okay, what is fair and reasonable as we move forward with the, with all these fees? At one point in time, we had said, you know what, do we revisit? I remember last year, we had talked about it, when the Budget, Budget War Committee had had some good discussion, a very rich discussion about this, saying, at what point in time do we take a look at some of this stuff and say, you know what, yearly, we need to be reevaluating all of these numbers and not waiting until there's been a period of five, 10, or more years, and then suddenly the differential is so big and the school district has had to pay so much money to fund a program. So what do we do here to be fair and reasonable and say incrementally, it makes sense that we do this? So I'm not saying that I don't support the fact that at some point in time, there needs to be some continued increase that mirror in some way or another the fact that we have increases in these programs. But I don't think we will ever get to a point where it is totally unsustainable. So just a couple comments from me.
Thank you. I'd like to go around and see where folks weigh in on this, and would you go first?
Sure. So we are, the budget is supporting K and pre-K, right? And do we know a percent?
I don't think it's a percent. I mean, I think that we have some numbers that are there that we'd say, right now, you know, as we've run numbers in the last couple of weeks, I think we have a flavor of how much additional monies are supporting these programs. Yeah.
Okay. We do know that the cost to support it is going to increase by the teacher salary.
At least.
At least, yeah. So, I mean, if we, if we put it off, you know, as a parent, if that were my child and you want to bump it, I think I'd be upset.
If we didn't bump it, did you say? I'm sorry.
Yeah, only, only because, I mean, the reason we got in so much trouble last year is because we didn't...
Do it for so long.
Increase incrementally, and it was painless. It would've been painless. But it got to the point where it was unsustainable. It was just, we just couldn't do it. So I don't know why we're waiting another year. I don't, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me unless you've got another reason for it. Because it would just make sense to me if it was just a little increase every year, it's less painful.
And I'm not disagreeing with your thinking at all. I'm, I'm just wanting to hold off on this year, but I'm not disagreeing with your thinking. I'm totally supporting that kind of thinking moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Neil.
Again, in theory, I'm kind of like in line with Brooke on this, because there's been so many programmatic changes. I won't say programmatic, but realignment of pre-K. I really think this year is a good year to kind of see where the chips fall. However, I do think that we should have a conversation, and I would entertain the conversation before year-end, to figure out how we index these different fee structures to something so that we have some, it's not just willy-nilly, that people are saying, hey, it's 3% this year, or it's $50 this year, or it's $400. We index it to something so that there, there is a direct relation to increase in costs versus, you know, what the individual would pay. And that I would apply to any of the fee structures that we're doing, whether it's the rentals, and not necessarily the same index, but indexing.
Right, right.
Right? So rentals, athletic fees, you know, all these things so that, to Lynn's point, Kathy's point, they do incrementally increase, it's not painful. And that's why we're getting like a lot of people that are upset, because I get that. They're in this, they're in this location where they're the ones that are suddenly making up for these huge cost differentials. And it's kind of a funny situation they're in, but it's the reality that it needs to be adjusted.
Adjusted.
Right? And so, yeah, I get that. And moving forward, that's going to be the rate, plus whatever the differential would be indexing if we went with something like that. So that's kind of where I am on, on any of the fee structures. But we need to do it thoughtfully. Index it to something that we can just kind of, administration can easily go to boom, boom, instead of spending weeks trying to rationalize this or that and coming up with a figure, or us looking at things and having 10 meetings with like, for athletics, Tanya and this and that. Boom, you just come up with it. This is the index. Here we go. This is my recommendation. We ask questions and then boom, it moves forward. And it doesn't get bogged down in this. It takes the drama out of all this. There is the expectation that there is some sort of indexing that takes place, because that can be put right into the contracts and the full understanding, and it's not a big thing that people get hit with.
Okay. Completely agree.
Thank you. Elise?
Yeah, I would echo both Lynn and Neil. My concern with this has always been, you know, that we don't put it off so long that parents get hit with a much bigger increase. And I would rather see it incrementally so that it's spread out across the years, it's fair to everybody, and it's not a surprise to anyone. And I really like Neil's suggestion of having a very clear formula or index that we're using to make these decisions, and so that it doesn't, you know, build up and build up over the time as it had in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Okay. I think part of the problem last year, besides the size of the increase, was the timing of how things happened.
Sure.
And I think we've got to look on a yearly basis at what our total costs are divided by, you know, simply divided by the number of prospective students or something like that, to get a total, total all-in cost of what each student costs us in the program. And I think what we need to do, for example, would be to take the costs that we're going to ultimately approve in this year's budget, have it studied by the budget, have those then dissected by the Budget and War Committee to figure out what the per-student cost should be, have that per-student cost announced at the beginning of the next school year for fiscal year '20. It's always, there's always going to be a lag, but it's going to be based on the actual budget that we've approved for the programs, and then whatever, you know, how, the problem is we've got to watch the timing, too. I think that's, that was a key, at least from what I've heard, that was a key issue last year. And it's, it's, it's kind of still hanging out there a little bit this year. I think a lot of the agita was controlled by Brooke's recommendation that the costs for next year, or the charges for next year, be held at this year's level. But I agree that, A, we've got to look at it on a yearly basis, once the budget is approved, and we look at it and look at the costs, and then we announce what those costs are going to be for the following school year. In other words, this year's budget has an impact upon the costs for the fiscal year '20, charges for the program, next year's budget. I understand that there's going to be a year's lag, but it's better than having a 10-year lag. And it's giving, and it's giving the parents enough of a warning if we, if we agree or we commit ourselves to having these, these fees set in October and November for the following school year. They can then look around, they can compare it to private schools, and, you know, it makes everybody's life, including the parents, a little bit easier in dealing with this. I, I really have thought about this a lot and, and think that that's the way we should approach it.
Okay. Thank you. Mark?
I'm content for this year to let the rates stay as they were for last year. We still have reason to assess the rates versus the expenses in several different dimensions next year. For example, all the health insurance benefits and some of the retirement benefits may not be assessed to these, these and other similar fee-based programs. And I think until those are brought into the programs, just doing an indexing on the rates isn't going to work.
You're talking OPEP as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we're still not, including all the expenditures that the district supports for these fee-based semi-independent...
these fee-based semi-independent activities that we're undertaking. So I would support, you know, next fall, seeing if we can take a look at that aspect of these and do rate setting in the fall before the budget season.
I see merit in that.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. I apologize, Kathy.
Just let me, because I'm taking notes, too. Okay, Neil?
So I see merit in that, but the challenge that I see is, is this is, let's say, required special needs program that we have. So we have, we have costs that are going to exist regardless, and we start getting into that real gray area of, when we're talking about OPEB and so forth, because we have to have X number of teachers, period, and they're going to incur the OPEB cost, period, you know, through the system. So I think, I get what you're saying, and I think maybe that's open for debate and everything else, when we take a look at, take a look at that. But I agree, I mean, it's definitely worthwhile to check out.
Good. And I would agree, too, on a couple of fronts here. I think, and I just want to go back to last year again, remember that one of the, one of the reasons we did what we did last year was because of the amount of work that the forensic auditor taken. That's why the timing was out of sync on that, there's no choice about that. We'd be the first to say that, we really would. I think you've brought up, and Neil too, the notion of, what I'm calling benchmarking, right? Saying, here's where we're at. And I feel like we're doing that with all of these things, whether it's the athletic user fees. Like, I'm, again, I think we have very rich discussions this morning at Budget and Warrant Committee around the athletic fees, you know, and it's a really awesome idea. I mean, again, to me, it's one more signal of how much thought we are putting into all of this. So I feel that, and the other thing, I mean, just to kind of go, kind of spring off of what Steve was saying, you know, with the calendar that Lorraine has been creating, and that's also a new benchmark for us. So you can literally see that next year, we can literally take that same calendar, probably tweak it a little bit, but she makes tweaks every single, every time we meet, she makes tweaks to that, so that all of this is, in a timely fashion, for our budget process. So, you know, and I agree, and I think, I think all of us feel that no parent should be surprised. I mean, all of us, because we're, like, most, all of us are parents, so we all know what that feels like, do you know what I mean? So I think we're all empathetic to that. So I would agree, I'd like to see us set something in play, not just for pre-K and K, although that's the topic, but I agree, whether it's the rental fees or the, so we know this is what's going to happen every year, and it kind of builds some nice routine and expectations, and no surprises into this whole process. So I know it's a lot of work right now, and Neil, I think you're the one that said, all these extra meetings that we're having right now, you're absolutely right, incredibly time-consuming right now, as we play with the numbers and try to make sure that we've thought of every single thing, and we, you know, but you're right, once this is established, next year will be much easier, and the year after will be much easier, so. So I really appreciate the discussion tonight.
Okay. So if I'm reading the room, it sounds like folks are supportive of keeping the fees the same. Is that accurate?
For the share.
For pre-K, K.
Pre-K, K, that was the topic. And that moving forward, we look at a way to, I like Neil's term of indexing, looking at how we can index it or create benchmarks, but to establish a way that these fees increase incrementally over time.
Is that what that happens?
Well, I think that it would, might be a good goal for warrant and budget, I don't know, I'd have to talk with the committee. But I also think that as soon as we put the budget to bed, that's a good time to start working on it.
Yeah, and I think, and I would also agree, I think it might be a really good plan for Budget and Warrant Committee, but I think that they should be looking at all of them.
No, no, and I think we use this as, what we saw, we're raising, there's a proposal for changing athletic fees, the rental fees, because all of them have languished for years without change, and it has created fiscal issues for the-
And an impending buildup of, of, yeah, so.
Exactly. Exactly. So if there is to be no change, then no vote?
No vote is necessary.
Is required? Okay, but there is, Steve?
I would just like to say yes, I agree that all of these, this whole fee structure should be looked at on an annual basis, so that we can keep up with what's been going on.
Yes.
However, I think that the biggest impact is in the pre-K and K. The user fees, these kinds of things are important, but I think the pre-K and the K is the one that there is more concern about, more parental buy-in as to what it is, and the need for having alternatives for the parent population to provide this kind of program for their children. The need to provide a different thing for a user fee or a rental fee, that's less, I think, critical to making sure that our constituents understand what's happening, what's coming down the road, and how we're impacting, or how the decisions made in this committee impact their lives going down the road.
Thank you. So in light of that, there's no need for a vote?
No.
But we do have the, to take it up at Budget and Warrant, to do the type of examination after the budget.
After the budget, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you, Eric Warren, thank you, Elise. Okay, subcommittee reports, Budget and Warrant, Mr. Darcy.
Holy cow, we got a lot. We had one of the medias meetings-
Give us the elevated version, and we're on the 10th floor.
I'm going to give you the elevated version. So as you know, we voted on the, to make a recommendation for the rental fees. We also made a recommendation, which I'll bring forward now, that we recommend to the school committee, that the school committee votes to have placed on the town warrants the proposition of creating two stabilization funds, one for the turf field, and one for facilities. Those funds would then be dedicated funds that money would be placed into for the replacement of the turf field, which should be coming up in, I think, under a decade, maybe, but it's going to be, it's in the six-figure range for the refurbishment of that, and we don't want to be scrambling where we're going to get that at this point. So if we can handle that incrementally with the stabilization fund, we're good. Same thing with the facilities, in theory, you know, with this, facilities, in theory, with pertaining to, like, say, the high school, if we had anything in a facility stabilization fund. The issue of, like, the septic tank, the septic system, for instance, we wouldn't be taking the big nut hit right now, we'd have some funds that we could allocate, you know, for an emergency, that we don't have to go to the towns for, we don't have to dip in and affect budgets. And part of that whole plan and process is a way of getting control of E and D, and the fluctuations of E and D over time, because we're building specifics that we don't need to draw down on E and D for at a later point. And then how much money gets put into those stabilization funds? That's not even something that's being talked about right now, it's just the creation of stabilization funds itself.
And you can create the stabilization funds, and just, it's a placeholder for when we do have money to put into them, but it has to be done through the town.
Through the town warrant, that's right. And especially for the turf field, it's important that we start that as soon as possible.
And that's not the point, because once you're done with that, you run to other stuff, but-
Because turf field is turf field.
I'm sorry. Lynn, I'm sorry, what, the question?
Yeah, I have a question. Facilities. Are you talking about regular maintenance stuff? Are you talking, because I'm a little concerned, because I thought E and D was for emergencies, which, to me, I mean, I would think that the wastewater treatment, the leaching field falls into that, because that's, you know, we couldn't have known that was going to happen. I thought that's what E and D was. And I could be wrong. But then facilities, because anything over $10,000 really go back to the towns. So how does, is-
So this would be for the high school, high school specific? So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be for, like, Florence Sawyer?
Right, but isn't there a, isn't there a limit that we actually go back to the towns for? So, I mean, I would imagine that the high school, like the other schools, I mean, we maintain them, but when it gets to a certain number, we go back to the towns. So-
For 10, how about that? That's for $10,000, but that is not inclusive of the high school, if I'm not mistaken, the high school is all-in, and that's town, because all three towns pay for the high school.
Can you speak to, I think Lynn's got a good question. So we have money in E and D, we want to set up, the proposal is to establish a stabilization fund for facilities, but if something is over $10,000, it goes to the town or the region?
Well, in the, in the case, say, the major pump for the well broke, and it was $150,000 to replace it, this is hypothetical.
Yes.
For that building alone, we would have to dip into E and D.
Right.
If we created a stabilization fund for those kinds of expenditures-
Right.
-so that we could maintain a level of E and D that's acceptable, is that correct?
Yeah, it's to get-
We'd have two separate, you either put it all in one pot, or you put it in a stabilization fund, stabilization fund, but then say, the money could only be used for this purpose, where E and D has more broad-
Right, and to piggyback on that, E and D, right now, there's this whole hamster wheel thing, right, that we put a ton of money in, we take a ton of money out. And so we're trying to bring that down to a more controllable level, okay? And so if you're using excess and deficiency, right? So if you have a stabilization fund for the high school, this specifically addresses issues that all three towns have to come forward, whether it's $10,000, whether it's $5,000, whether it's $100,000, and deal with. And it's a way, it's a format to be able to lessen any blows that get passed on to the town, right? And so it doesn't create this disruption.
Like I said, only E and D is for.
Well, you could use that, it's excess and deficiency, so it's excess funds, and it can be used for the deficiency of specific things in the budget.
It affects your bond rating, too, if you don't, if you don't have.
If you don't have, you're at risk.
So we want to keep a placeholder, so that we can have a good bond, and we want to use the stabilization fund for everything else?
Well, I'm pretty sure that that also works in your favor, too, the stabilization.
Sure.
It does.
But it's capital, it's only for capital projects that you can set up the-
Yeah, but it almost sounds like, you know, it almost sounds like we're building it down, but we're saying, well, maybe we'll make up two funds, and we'll call one one thing, we'll call one the other, even though they both seem the same.
They're not the same thing, that's the main thing.
No, they're not at all.
So the stabilization fund gets funded through the budget process, and the towns approve the money that goes into the stabilization fund through the annual budget process. And then, for example, some thing happens, say the septic field, that's a current example, those funds, because they've already gone through the budget process in the stabilization fund, suppose we've been funding it $50,000 a year for 10 years, and there was this resource available, if there's some facilities issue at the high school.
Right.
That can be drawn down by a two-thirds vote of the school committee, without any further action on the town part, because the money had been funded through the regular budget process. Now, by having the money in the stabilization fund, it allows you to possibly, it's a decision the school committee might make, to have a somewhat smaller E, excess and deficiency fund, because you're not resorting to using that for crisis occasions such as that. Maybe, or maybe not, that decision gets made. But so it's true, we have been using the E and D fund in ways that you talk about for facilities issues, and maybe other significant things, but it's, when, if we were, you know, in the middle of the year, if we needed to draw it down by, say, $500,000, because something happened, I don't know, maybe a gym collapsed, we actually would have to go to town meetings and actually ask for permission, because we would be increasing our budget in order to draw down the E and D fund, in the middle of the budget year.
Even though it's a state mandate, we have to get these things done. See what I mean? So now you get, whether it's, and if it is in the middle of the year, bringing the town together for the town meetings, yada, yada, just to get that put together, and then scrambling to find the funds in the meanwhile to make the emergency repairs. What this does is, it literally stabilizes that, okay, so that you're not having the willy-nilly. You set an amount for whatever that fund would be, right? You can cap it if you want, and you just, and that money comes in through, again, through the budgetary process.
Right.
But you don't have the ins and outs that take place like crazy with the E and D, and therefore, like Mark was saying, the E and D can be reduced, so you're not having these surpluses that then are just, you know, again, out there. It creates another control on the way that things, the expenses are done here in the district.
I think I have to see how the warrants are written up, because it sounds like you're asking that a certain amount of money get put into that every single year, with or without a cap?
I don't, no, no, you can leave, you can establish it and leave, with nothing in it. You're creating the placeholder, the fund, but you don't necessarily have to put any money in it. I think it would be a gold tube.
Right. And just like OPEB, every year, we're voting for how much we want to put in the OPEB fund, you would do the same thing to put into the stabilization fund.
My fear is what happened with the track field.
What's that?
When the track and field went out, it went to the towns asking for money, all right? And the towns came back and said, okay, we'll give you half, whatever. So, but if you have a stabilization fund, you could pretty much just, they could have just done it as they wanted, right? And not gone to the towns. Because now the money is in a fund somewhere, and they can just say, well, we have the money, let's just go do it.
But that money, that money is channeled specifically.
For capital projects, so we're just talking about the high school-
Capital projects that could be done.
But it's already been funded.
But we don't need to issue some to the towns at that point.
Well, in that case, that would have been a lot of money that you had in a stabilization fund to be able to do that project. Yes, you could do that, and there wouldn't be one of those individuals sitting here at that time next year, we'd all be tart and feathered somewhere else. So I would think sanity would come into play. But that's an extreme that you're talking about, and irresponsible, what you're talking about, too.
I, if I-
That's abuse of a fund like that.
Yeah, I think to, just as a general overarching, from my perspective right now, I think it's just the opposite. I think what they're trying to do, now, correct me if I'm wrong, for those of you who sat in that meeting, but this is not the first time this has come up. This particular notion of doing this has come up for over a year that I can think of, you know, I can remember Dr. Hemmings first coming in and talking about it with us, you know? And we had that discussion about how it would positively help to support our bond rating being at a good level. I think just the opposite, I think it was about being conservative, and, correct me if I'm wrong, being conservative, and being prudent, and being responsible. So I think it was just, that was really what drove this thinking, is, would that be-
And better control, specifically of the E and D, with the meeting we have with Dr. Hemmings, that was, this is one of the methods for getting better control of the function of E and D, and all the ins and outs, because there you have no control. We, you know, if we really wanted to, and we had all that money in E and D, we could do the same dang thing that you're talking about, okay? This stabilization fund directs it to a specific thing, so you just can't spend it on any old thing that you want. So turf field is turf field, facilities would be facilities.
Okay.
Right? So you're talking about one in the same, but in my mind, it's an additional safeguard that you're putting in place for that, rather than, it's sort of the opposite viewpoint to Brooke's point that you're approaching.
It seems like I have a pot to draw from.
What's the deadline for having a warrant to the towns?
Oh, I'm not sure. Can you remember what the deadline is, Pat, for having the articles to the warrant?
Different, and each town-
It's a little bit different, yeah.
Roughly much.
Yeah.
Unless you have, like, a major capital.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think that you need to make the decision tonight, but I, again, I think that you're just being prudent right now, and, I mean, the turf field, to me, is just an obvious, we know that this is going to be coming, we need to be prepping for it. It makes total sense to me that we start doing this. You know, to be honest, I almost look a little bit differently. I don't, I think if my community sat out there and said, wait a minute, you guys have seen this coming for 10 years, and you didn't do anything about it?
It's a cleaning house, you're saving for it.
Yeah, I, that's almost exactly how I see it, is almost a contingency, specific to Steve's point, to a targeted, targeted planned event.
I would strongly recommend, as Chair of B and W, that we bring this to a vote no later than next meeting on the 14th. Fair enough, to give some time.
To vote tonight.
Vote for recommendation to be placed on a warrant.
The committee- The committee this morning voted to recommend that the school committee vote to establish the two stabilization funds.
Right.
Do people need more information? Are people ready to vote on that recommendation?
I think it would be better to go a little slower and give opportunity for concerns to be raised and for discussion to be made.
So, can we put that on the.
Yeah, I think, I think that Alita's already doing that. You could put it, you could put it on either next meeting or the 28th.
I don't know how long this is.
Nope, for both, but it'll be a couple of weeks to kind of figure that out.
So, let's see, let's put it on the 28th meeting then.
Okay.
28th?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
It wouldn't be a problem if we decided, maybe we'll recommend it and go for, to the extent towns have fall meetings, ask for it then, or in the following year. It's not, it's not necessarily a rush.
It's not urgent.
A rush to do it, but we think it's a good idea.
The turf field is even, you know, and.
Okay, so it's on the agenda for the 28th, and request for additional information to whom that should be.
I'll funnel that through Lorraine.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, I will report on the personnel committee.
Was there anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry, Neil.
Neil, was there?
Yeah, so, we voted on the rental fees, we voted recommendation to the school committee that the administration, that we vote to have the administration close, that we vote for the administration to close any dormant funds in return, said funds, if they're in a grant form, say, from Alice Eaton, for instance, which is a small organization out of Stowe, I believe it is. And we return the funds to them, because we don't technically know what those funds were, and then if they want to re-gift them with a specificity.
Specific.
Thank you. Glasses, everything. And then, and then, basically, we're clearing, we're clearing the books of all these outstanding revolving funds.
You know, I really still see it as, still an extension to the forensic audit and just housekeeping and kind of cleaning things up, and this is just one more thing to clean up.
It was one of the items on the corrective action.
Yeah.
Honestly. And so, this is a continuation of that. So, we're voting to recommend an authorization, or we voted to recommend to the school committee that the school committee authorize the administration to do so.
So, I think I have, if I can pull up the minutes from today, I can give the wording. Okay, let me see what I have here. Okay, so, let's see, let's see, let's see. Okay, deletion of dormant revolving fund accounts. Direct administration to review inactive accounts and make a recommendation to return funds to originators for disposition, and this will happen on a case-by-case basis with the administration, they will do that. And then, with regard to student activity funds that may be dormant, Brooke will, we didn't vote on this, but Brooke will clarify with the principals how they can use the funds for student activity.
Because our understanding was we didn't need a vote.
No, no.
That was just something Brooke was going to do to get those off the books.
So, the motion would be to direct administration to review inactive accounts and return the funds to originators.
Well, I don't know if it would be worded that way, because originators, some wouldn't, some may end up in the general fund or to the school specific.
Give me another word.
Let us know the disposition of the funds.
Okay, I have disposition here written.
Suggest as disposition, perhaps.
Okay, Mark, all right. Recommend, direct administration to review inactive funds and make a recommendation for the potential for disposition of them?
Yes.
Is that?
Sounds good enough.
Yeah.
So moved.
Thank you.
So, I wonder if we maybe ought to just let this sit for the next meeting, since it wasn't clearly indicated on our agenda that we might be acting on this.
No, well, it's part of Neil's report. This is the report of Budget and Warrant of what we did, and one of the things was we made two votes to recommend things.
Well, we did make that recommendation, that vote, it was just the wording that she had put on, that Kathy had put on, returning to the origination, that.
Yeah.
It was.
We just want to know what, review them and do something with the money that's in them, basically.
Right.
Based on, yeah, make a recommendation for the disposition of the funds.
Disposition of funds and the return, and we voted on, and the return of funds to any outside organizations, such as.
Alita's writing the motion. What do you got, Alita?
I have no idea.
She has no idea.
Do you have to administration to review inactive funds, make a recommendation for the disposition of funds?
The operative word is inactive, inactive accounts.
Inactive revolving funds.
Revolving funds, yes.
Right there.
Direct administration to review inactive revolving funds and make a recommendation for the disposition of funds.
I would leave it right at that.
Yep. Okay, so that's the motion. So.
Because we're still going to come back to report.
So moved.
Yeah.
And.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, is there any more?
Roll call, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any more discussion, questions? Okay, roll call, Mr. Joe.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Elise.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yeah.
Kathy, yes. Thank you. That was pink. Is that it, Neil?
And then, just as far as what we did, we requested that the OPEB actuarial report get posted for any of the outstanding years that you may have in your possession, so that that is relevant to anyone who's following the OPEB discussion, can do so online. And that is really, that looks like it? Yeah. Athletic fees, I think are going to be coming forward.
Next meeting.
Next meeting for, next meeting for us, and also, next meeting for school committee.
That's right.
We'll be meeting one week in between the school committee, but we will have a recommendation at that point.
Great discussion on that today. Great discussion on the round for Budget and Warrant. I thought it was a great meeting. It was meaty to your term.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Personnel, we met last week, the focus of our discussion was teacher roundtable, which we are going to schedule in the spring, and the next meeting is Monday, and we're going to continue that discussion. Okay, Susan isn't here for policy report. Elise, anything for C F A?
No, I was not at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Steve, anything on emergency response task force?
No, but there was a, there was a meeting for the School Health Advisory Council a week ago, and I was unable to be there.
Okay.
And I have not seen any minutes from that meeting as of yet.
Thank you.
And as far as the policy is concerned, there will be a meeting with the representative from MASC prior to our next meeting on the 14th, it'll take place at 4:00.
Very good.
Thank you.
I think that's, yeah, you're being invited.
We have a 5:00.
Okay.
We have 5:00 at, I don't, I think after your policy, where then you want to do a meeting.
Okay. Let's see, correspondents?
None.
Consent agenda. Good?
Yeah, our agenda, basically, has already been pre-established for our next, next meeting.
Okay, and there is.
So, there are other items?
Any other items for consideration for the next meeting?
Other than what we talked about for the recommended stabilization.
Yes, those will come forward. Yes, exactly.